Okay, we're gonna go. Call this regular meeting of Grand Forks City Council to order. The first item of business is the agenda, and I have items A to F to add to the agenda under late items. I can go through that list if you're not familiar with it. It was the items from this morning's meeting that we're bringing forward. I won't read them off at this point, and we'll deal with them under new business. So can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as modified? Councilor Doherty, Councilor Wires, all those in favor? Opposed? Carry. We have two sets of minutes, April the 15th, regular meeting minutes, a motion to adopt. Councilor Smith, Councilor Kendall, all those in favor? And the April 23rd, special meeting minutes, motion to adopt. Councilor Kendall, Councilor Wershagen, all those in favor? We have no delegations. And we're down to council reports, starting from Councilor Wershagen.
These are working, that's right. I have no report.
Good way to get it started. Councilor Doherty.
As you worship our 10 AKBLG conference was a nice conference, very good speakers. Nice time with Councilors Wires, Gary Smith, and Bob Kendall. And I want to say that the parks are about all ready to go except Barbarian Park. In the next couple of days, the washroom should be open there.
Yeah.
For the superintendent.
Yes.
And the other parks are all open. And that's all what I got to worship.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Our speakers aren't working, are they?
Project.
Oh, project. So I started out August the sixteenth, or August, April the 16th, I attended the 80th AKBLG conference in Invermere along with councillors here at the table and corporate officer Diane Heinrich. Heinrich, this conference attracted the largest number of delegates, 138 voting members with 213 in total attending this year. I'm pleased to announce that I've been selected to serve a two-year term as an executive director, and that was by acclamation. There were four positions open, and we were all brought back by acclamation for the next term. The key point I took away was building a regional economy, one family at a time. It takes a family to raise a region. Invest in early childhood development, which Grand Forks is fortunate to have the success by six, and strong family services through programs such as Baby's Best Chance. This was one of the key focuses around the conference was built. Your brain is developed by your environment, your circumstances, your location, and your opportunity. So a stat to remember that by 2031, the Kootenai Boundary will be the second oldest regional district out of 30. Didn't realize that, huh? So the guest speaker, Dr. Catherine Loughlin, introduced us to placemaking, a term that was new to me, but an interesting approach to knowing your community. The key point I picked up was that your number-one market is your residence. They have community attachment, satisfaction in where they live, pride, willing candidates to recommend their community, and many feel that their choice of place to live is the perfect place for me. A good directive was to start from a place of strength. Tell them what they are good at, and good will follow. So she was an excellent speaker. She was, didn't she? Mandy Johnson introduced us to building walk-friendly communities. She did describe the community horror cul-de-sacs. No way out, but only one way in. Reducing speed through downtown cores, 20 is plenty, was one of the keynotes I took away. Sitting is the new smoking.
Sit.
Sitting. Sitting is the new smoking.
Oh, I see.
Sitting. So we have to get out of the walk. Make walkability a prime focus. Ah, see, you should have been there. Walkability a prime focus of your rejuvenization plan. Create gathering places, make unfriendly gathering places. And the one that popped into my mind in our community that I visit quite often is the post office. And you know, everybody goes in and out of there, but there's no place to sit, and it's the most unfriendly environment around that building. So there was a place where I thought adding benches to encourage people to stop, sit down, and talk to their neighbors. No blank walls, create colorful murals. So the final point, narrow your road widths where you can to reduce speed. That was an interesting point. And connect your community sidewalks to your community trails. So the national launch for walkfriendly.ca will happen in, this is the national one, in 2014, so we're encouraging communities to register now. One example Mandy provided was the city of Surrey's walking plan that can be found online along with Vancouver's. Vancouver's commitment is to be walking friendly by 2019. One of the other presentations was the AKBLG Regional Collaborative Group, which I participate on, and it was an interactive session for delegates building communities together. And it was like a speed networking, like speed dating. Shared services was the theme, and the interaction created a credible list of opportunities throughout the region. Primarily a centralized list of equipment and operators at one online site. And that one website that was common to the region, we felt was the Columbia Basin Trust, was earmarked as being the best resource, with a tab designated as community sharing on the homepage. So that was one of the items that came out. The second one was from Andrew McCrackman, the mayor of Beaumont. He would like to, you know, in their discussions, in their interaction, they eyeballed municipal engineers' regional office for our region. A regional engineers' office. To have them living and keeping the dollars in our region, because if we think about it, most of our engineering works and consulting work goes out of our community, our region, the open organ, urban systems, etc. My final comment came from presenter Cam Matheson from BC Hydro on his presentation on integrated community planning. There is currently a $200 billion municipal infrastructure deficit in Canada. Remember, electricity is part of this. There is evolutionary changes coming to all electrical grids where customers are looking for smaller electrical voltage loads, and I'll leave that comment right there.
Like, we don't know what that means?
Well, we have a small electrical grid here.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
Not voltage, but...
We're trying.
Okay.
You know, they're looking for the smaller sources of power. The resolution session provided Grand Forks the elusive position as being the number-one resolution receiving unanimous support from the delegates with the goal to eliminate ad hoc grants and work with communities to achieve long-term funding project-focused results over the next 25 to 30 years. We need to look further into the future beyond the current 20-year planning point that we realistically, to achieve realistic results on major infrastructure needs impacting many of our communities in British Columbia and across Canada. Rural communities need to be recognized for collaborative resolution to managing project-focused needs regionally. Finally, I did extend an invitation to the auditor general to come to Grand Forks for their first performance audit. Notably, the office will be up and running by May 31st, which is an indicator that possibly the election results may play a role in the continuation of this provincial project. That was just my guess. On April the 21st, I attended the, oh, and I also, I should say, I did recommend to all our attending councillors and staff to interplay with the exhibitors, because they are very important to conferences, you know? They are the funders, the supporters. So engagement, engagement with all of the, and I came home with a whole pile of stuff, and I talked to everybody, and guess what? I won the summer vacation package.
No.
The exhibitors voted me the most interactive delegate at the conference.
Where are we going?
It's a beautiful package, wasn't it?
That was nice.
I'm going whitewater rafting, golfing, beautiful hotels, dinners. The Columbia Valley is going to be entertaining for a while.
For a while. So congratulate.
Well, thank you. And on April the 21st, I attended the Boundary District Arts Council 14th Annual BC Arts and Culture Week Performing Arts Gala at the High School Auditorium, and welcomed everyone on behalf of the city. The theme, Art in Action, saw many performers from reading poetry to piano solos and vocals. So that was a part of its production. On April the 25th, citizens on patrol, and a new slate of officers are in place for the coming year. Speedboard patrols will be out on the streets of Grand Forks now that the weather's nice. The first one was on May the 1st, and we were over on Market Avenue and Second Street. And we also do surveys on cellphone users and seatbelt violators. And surprisingly, we spotted a number of drivers scrambling for their seatbelts. So beware. April 27th, I attended the Boundary Museum Society's annual general meeting of barbecue at Fortova. It was a strong turnout with the new board in place for 2013. On April the 30th, I attended the Boundary Economic Development Committee's monthly meeting for your worship on behalf of yourself. EDAC will be receiving a letter from this committee in response to your document outlining transportation concerns within the region. So they are forwarding a letter. The local, and I might say they are doing a study, a feasibility study, for a welcome kiosk component over in the west Kootenai over by Rock Creek. They've allocated $10,000, up to $10,000 for a feasibility study for a welcome point. Recognizably missing over there for night travelers upon the highway are commercial washrooms, because the service stations and that all closed down, so they are, I guess it's been in, area director Hill Baird has been looking for this for quite some time.
Yes, he has.
Well done for him. And the local Grand Forks Flying Association elected their 2013 slate of officers. Their plans are now underway for the second annual fly-in on Sunday, August the 25th. And I have received, and this is just an environment committee update, our next meeting is Thursday, May the 16th, at 11 o'clock at the Regional District Office. But prior to that, I've received a couple of proposals from the Grand Forks Community Trails Society with their plans to initiate two projects in support of Bike to Work Week that commences May 27th to June the 2nd. Now, what we identified is there's six environmental events that are happening, and so we've gone to lead organizations in the community to take on some of these events, and the Grand Forks Community Trails Society is stepping to the plate. They will also be, they'll have two, they've started two different Bike Centers Computer Challenges that very week. Well, the first one that they're going to do is Bike to Vote on May the 14th. And they're going to have bike stands up there for people. And they're, they've started this with two local businesses. This event asks bikers to register their participation online at biketovote.ca, so you can go online and register and promote their own use of the bike. Obviously, there are payoffs to the Trail Society as well as other bike clubs, because it advertises the number of people who do use their bicycle. And I just wanted to point out that the second challenge that they are initiating is the request by the Environment Committee for the Bike to Work Campaign from May 27th to June the 2nd. They are registering this community in the event and will be promoting it in the community with posters, newspapers, ads, and social media. And it's very similar to the Bike to Vote, as well as the previous commuter challenge that we've had in the past through the Environment Committee and the Air Quality Committee. So in support, we've been asked that the Environment Committee support this initiative, and I'd like to bring a motion at this time to support the two environmentally events presented in my report and provide $200 for advertising and prizes from the Environment Committee's 2013 budget.
I have a second for that, Councilor Doherty. Discussion? This is to use budgeted money from the Environment Committee to basically stimulate interest in this event in advertising and prizes?
Prizes, yes.
Question? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry.
Thank you. So I'll contact the Trail Society, and I thank them for their participation. Now, why did I freeze the phone there? Also, well, I guess the rest are going to come up in here, so I'll save the rest for later.
Now, why do you got an award?
Not because I'm noisy?
Busy. Thank you. Councilor Kendall.
Thank you, worship. I, along with several other councillors, as has already been mentioned, attended the AKBLG, and this was my second time, and I found it was much more rewarding though, just having met some of the other mayors and councillors and regional directors. It's a much more rewarding experience just having the camaraderie of, you know, knowing each other, so I found it really, really good. On April 23rd, I attended the monthly EDAC meeting, where the committee spent most of the meeting time with our CIO and streamlining our processes so that we can work to integrate our work more productively with the city strategic plan. So we're not coming up with initiatives that don't meet council strategic goals, so we're going to be working more to be on the same wavelength with that. April 24th, I attended the Regional Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting in Greenwood as the city's liaison. It was a very productive meeting, with several new initiatives being discussed by the Regional Chamber, and I think there's some exciting things coming forward from them. April 27th, I attended the Boundary Museum, AGM, as the city liaison. Museum is excited to get the new season underway with several new and exciting projects for this year. One is working cooperatively with the Dukavor Mill and Heritage Society to get the mill, the flour mill up and running, and using that as a venue to promote the city. And lastly, I've just been informed that the Good Sam RV Club has approved that December it will be held in Grand Forks in 2014. It's a big event for the city. There'll be 120 to 150 RVs here for several days next year, so that's exciting news for the city, and hopefully you can show them our hospitality, and they'll come back. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Do we, we have to entertain them as they expect things sort of?
Just be nice to them.
Just be nice. Well, that's exciting. Good work. Councilor Croft?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Smith?
Thank you, worship. 16th and 19th, I was at the AKBLG. Again, I really enjoyed the speakers, as the rest of us did. And one thing I found encouraging was that as Dr. Loughlin was making her presentation, I just kind of answered a couple of our fellow councillors and recognized that a lot of the, many of the things that she was talking about to make, to do this placemaking thing, is stuff that we've undertaken already. So we've come a fair distance along the way to, you know, making us stand out in BC and maybe, you know, through a whole region. On the 22nd, I walked around with Jenny Coleshill. We were looking for scouting out back house locations. So we looked like, it looks like we've got a few identified, and we're just going to follow that up with one of the city staff to see if they were according, you know, with the equipment they have available. Along with Councilor Kendall, I was at the EDAC, and I kind of gave that report. On the 24th, I was in attendance at the Downtown Merchants Association, and we're looking to organize a community yard sale for May the 18th. A lot of work's been done on this by the board of directors for that, and we're looking at a variety of locations throughout the city and really kind of making almost a walk where people can just walk around the downtown quarter and browse stuff and buy stuff. On the, yes, and there's a notice actually in the paper for that as well. On that night, I attended the Phoenix Foundation Board of Directors meeting, and where we approved the granting committee's recommendations for giving out grants for this year. And then on the 25th, I was up at the museum to attend a little session there with Paul Pennard on the solar system that they are hoping to use on their new building, fairly cost-effective, and, you know, it's promising as we're trying to keep up the solar city thing as using alternate means of power generation. And then on the 26th, I was at the family-friendly business meeting, where we're looking, now that we've kind of got that program in place, where, you know, to be a family-friendly business, you have to have a clean, accessible washroom with a change table and a place to sit for a breastfeeding mother, which also accommodates older people that may need to rest. And we're looking at hopefully getting, we set a goal as of having 30 businesses by this time next year as family-friendly businesses. And it was encouraging, because again, at the AKBLG, they were talking about family-friendly business, so I got to put my hand up and say, well, this is what we've done, and by all means, get all of us if we can help in any way. So it was good to be kind of up in front on that. And then on the 3rd of this month, I was at the Dare Committee meeting, and it was very exciting. But there was a lot more light generated than heat, as Barry Brando said. And we'll have a couple of things coming before Committee of the Whole on June 6th.
Great.
And that's my report.
Thank you. I have a couple of items. First of all, I'd like to comment on the mayor's meeting, but before I forget it, that $500 for the solar program for the museum came from area D Director Rowley Russell, who is here this evening with us. Good evening, Rowley. But thank you for the donation to the solar program. The mayor's meeting, interesting that we were struggling with the mayor's caucus and its relationship to UBCM, and the president of UBCM was there, and so there was a good discussion about how we could complement UBCM on certain matters where the mayors would be in an ideal position to work directly with government. One of those issues was infrastructure funding, the other was governance and regional district issues. So a couple of issues that are at that level where the mayors feel that they could make a contribution. The meetings have been very slow and laborious for everyone, because they're trying to get some terms of reference. So they're building an organization, and that is very frustrating for some people who feel we should be getting along with issues. But in fact, they did come to a consensus in terms of the structure of the group and the reporting relationship to UBCM. So it was worthwhile. The next one will be in conjunction with UBCM during the UBCM meetings. I have one other item I wanted to bring up, which is kind of a last-minute item, but it's brought to my attention that there's a plan by the Postal Service to open alternative postal sites in town, so I hope to report back to council on how this is developing. It's unclear at this point what the implications will be, but certainly a move that should be done with consultation with the local community. So we have got very little on this at this point, but we'll be looking forward to more information in the next few weeks. And that's it for my meeting, or for my information on the regional, well, let's pass council reports at this level first. Motion to accept council reports. Councilor Kendall, Councilor Smith, all those in favor? The regional report, at the regional table at this point, we are struggling with a number of things to do with relationships, and I have to report that the Economic Development Committee of the East Boundary has been terminated. So they are no longer going to continue with the East, and so that was Trail and all of the smaller communities around there. But they've decided to terminate that economic development initiative. It was fairly big, it was structured, but they felt that it was just not contributing sufficient to warrant the kind of money that was being spent on it, the bottom line on it. Other than that, the regional table at this point is working on a number of issues that relate to things that we were presented here as well in this morning's meeting, including the Kootenai Diet Program, those kinds of things. So often what we get is a repetition of what we're being presented with at our own council. So nothing at this point jumps out from the regional table as being an issue that is of great importance to us, but I am willing to answer any questions as usual on the regional issues. Hearing none? Can I have a motion to accept the regional report? Councilor Doherty, Councilor Wershagen, all those in favor? Okay, the next item of business is a, from Staff for Decisions. The Grand Forks Boundary Regional Agricultural Society previously presented us with a request that we basically commit to a food charter, and we held it off pending a report back from our administration. That report is in, and clearly the Ts have been crossed. It seems like that it really is consistent with our sustainability plan, and that we should in fact support this initiative. So I would ask that the recommendation be made into a motion that we support the Grand Forks Boundary Regional Agricultural Society food charity as it reflects a vision of our council and our community. Councilor Wires, Councilor Smith? Pretty straightforward?
Yeah, well, we talked about it last time.
We did. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. The next item is the Parcel Tax Role Review Panel. And as you know from reading your information, this has to do with the parcel tax role and the commitment of $70,000 to a specific area that has asked for some work on, I think, roads and water were the two items that they were asking for work on. And so they are going to be paying for it themselves, but we need three councillors basically to review who is in or is out of this cost arrangement. And so I'm asking for three volunteers for 10 o'clock on May the 24th to conduct this poll. Councilor Wires, Councilor Doherty, got another one somewhere? Councilor Smith?
May the 24th. The motion?
May the 24th at 10:00 a.m. That, will it quit you? Where? I'm assuming it would be here in county.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion is that council appoint these three councillors, Councilor Wires, Councilor Doherty, and Councilor Smith, to sit on the Parcel Tax Review Panel on May 24th, 10:00 a.m. at City Council Chambers. Such a motion. Councilor Wershagen, second, Councilor Smith, all those in favor? Bringing us to information items. A to H, can I have a motion that we accept our recommendations of those? Councilor Doherty, Councilor Smith. Child Fine VC, the city does not make proclamations, although we recognize the importance of this program. Grand Forks and District- Grand Forks and District Fall Fair, this needs to be made in a separate motion that we grant permission to use at Dick Bartlett Park. 23rd and 24th and 25th subject to Fall Fair Society entering into a park use agreement with the city, contingent on liability, and naming the city as additional insured. Councilor Doherty, Councilor Krog, and discussion. All those in favor? Carrie. A second motion, further be resolved that special occasion liquor license for the Fall Fair at Dick Bartlett Park with the usual liability coverage and naming the city as additional insured. And that the licensing certificate ICVC drinking and driving posters be up and that there be a designated driver program. Councilor Doherty, Councilor Krog, and discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie. A letter from Mr. Roy Ronnegan thanking the council on behalf of the Committee for the Enhancement of the Gilpin Grasslands, received for information. Candidate Day Committee requesting funding for special entertainment on Canada Day in the amount of $575, received for information and further discussion. Do you wish to make this? This is to contribute to an entertainment cost of around $1,000 and change, $1,200 worth approximately. Okay, council, I'm going to back this up a bit here on the advice of our CAO. In the request from the Fall Fair Society, there is a section that pertaining to the in-kind support from the city. And although you don't have that clearly identified, I would ask that, Councilor Krog?
Oh, that if we need a motion, I would put that motion.
I'm wondering if we could have some explanation of it at this point in time?
It is in here.
Does that have to pass a motion to have the person speak?
Yes, we do. Can we ask for?
So moved.
So moved, the second ear. This is to ask a floor participant to speak. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie. Hi.
Good evening, your worship.
Hi, Chris Thompson.
What we're asking for in the in-kind is the same level of services that have been provided to the Fall Fair for many years. And that is the transport of bleachers and the picnic tables to dolls for Bartlett Park. In addition to support with the fence and fencing, I believe, Jason?
Yes.
And also with the truck wagon, mini truck wagon races that are a huge draw, the use of the city's water truck and an operator in force to.
Cover the trap.
Prepare the trap. This has always been part of a civic service that the city has provided in the past. In my discussions with some of your staff, they're concerned with the change to the city's grants and aid policy, although my understanding is that was all monetary from when I was sitting on council. Does that have any impact on council's decision to support the Fall Fair with their in-kind contributions?
I don't believe it does. I would ask for a separate motion on this matter to, to make it clear that we support it or not. Councilor Krog?
I'll make the motion to support it. Again, when we were talking about grants and aid, that we've always done, you know, support services. They do cost, so the taxpayer grant works, does pay for them. But it's an institution that's got a huge history and been going. And I do like their letter where it says they're not requesting any funds from the city of Grand Forks. That's refreshing to see letters.
Okay, so the motion is made in the second ear. Councilor Doherty, discussion. I don't recall the role we played in the fencing in previous years. Did we put up the fence?
I'd have to defer to Jason for a little bit.
Yes, yes, there was where the mini trucks were playing.
Yeah.
That fence was put up by the city as well as Lass and a few volunteers, yes.
Does, does this city have fencing?
Nope, we supply them.
We supply the fencing?
We just use it.
I supplied the fence posts.
Can you do that again?
Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering what manpower times six is? Is that six days of full-time staff or, just so I can understand what that means?
There was six guys working with Lass at that time.
Six employees from the city?
So is that, so that's not on Saturday, Sunday, Monday, this would be, or Saturday, Sunday, on the weekends, this was during the regular week?
This was the setup portion of it.
The setup, but then on the Saturday and Sunday is when we have, in addition to Friday night, the mini truck wagon races. So there would entail the water truck and an employee to operate that to, you know, keep the fields relatively dust free.
Further discussion, Councilor Kendall?
I don't have any problem in supporting, you know, the Fall Fair and what they're asking for. What I would like to see is if our management team can, at the end of the event, maybe put a dollar figure to what the in-kind contributions are so that if, if we're going to continue doing this, we actually have a reference to what, what the city is contributing.
I believe they did do that for the 2012 year. I believe the total cost still is $6,186.61. And that, that was included as, as, I would imagine in your community services budget, part of that.
Councilor Smith?
I was just wondering if, because the fire department, of course, has, like their water, you know, they could spray water, but it's a volunteer, you know what I mean? Just wondering if they could be approached or if that would be an issue.
Mr. Allen?
I believe last year our public works staff volunteered their time to, to wet the, the facilities for the truck riding races. So I would, I would be asking if that's the case this year with the group of council wants to move forward with this. And then if that's not an option, maybe, maybe Councilor Smith's suggestion with the volunteer fire department?
The Fall Fair would appreciate any help from whatever source we can get to, you know, to water, be it the fire department or, or public works employee.
Further, ready for the question? This is to support the in-kind involvement with the Fall Fair. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie. Thank you very much. All right. Going back down, we have introduced Mr. Ronnegan's thank you letter on behalf of the Gilpin Grasslands. The Canada Day contribution to entertainment. So if you can see by the report, this is a native dancing troupe from Osuias that is available for, with a teepee included for $1,200 or $1,300, somewhere in that range. Is it behind me? Yeah, see, they have more information than I have. I gotta get a mirror so I can see what they're putting back there. So that is the request. How do you wish to dispose of it? Counselor Kendall?
Well, I, I think that if we receive it for information and the further discussion would be.
Away from this table.
Well, it may, we're going to have a grant and aid discussion in the near future, I believe. And I think this may fall under how we're going to proceed with the.
Can you see, was there a timeframe given to us on that? Counselor Krog?
No, alls I saw was a half hour to an hour show for $1,000 and then $150 for the teepee. We have supported Canada Day celebrations in the past with members of council cutting cakes and I think there has been a little bit of monetary.
Yes, sir.
And we do have some, some local groups that usually perform. I don't think we need to hire people from outside of town to come entertain at a family local picnic celebration.
Councilor Wires?
Here you, your worship, to the CAO. Do we know if they made an application for the Heritage Canada funding? Don't we, don't we have $800 in community support in our 2013 budget for Canada Day?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, they, they did make application for the candidate grant, the candidate committee, and I believe, I don't know if we've received that grant or not yet. We don't know yet, but that would be going towards, I believe, the whole project.
General operation.
Yeah. So this is above and beyond this, this request. I believe this opportunity came up and they decided they would ask council.
Okay, if there's no desire here, I'll move on to the next item and we'll discuss this further. The Kootenai Pet Dog Association received for information. They had some very interesting suggestions in this, and I can tell you that the regional district is scrambling to get something out here within the next month. That would be another draft. Their approach to it this time will be to take it out to the community for discussion prior to any attempt to move it through the process. And so seeing the sensitivity of this, I think they're incorporating as much new thinking in this as possible, so it'll be coming soon. Walking Trails to Riverside Meadows, very interesting. Alan Cooper is asking us at this point to look at our previous commitments there and at this point, I think we need to give our staff some room here to take a look at this matter, so receive for information. The manager of development and engineering, the enhancement of the Gilpin Grasslands, there is a motion required here. Resolve that city, city as holder of the Overton Creek Water License work in collaboration with the Committee for the Enhancement of the Gilpin Grasslands and offer administrative assistance on issues relating to Overton Creek Water Licenses. In particular, the way I read this is applying for grants and getting some money forward on this matter. Councilor Wershagen?
I'll make the motion.
Oh. I thought we had a discussion. All right, so yeah, very positive move again for the city to take some responsibility here. All those in favor? Carrie. Les Johnson, president of the Historical Society, again, requesting to store historical newspapers in City Hall. And he's done a great job of really defining how much space is needed and clarifying how limited space it will take. Refer to staff for determination of the feasibility. And so we need to give some room here for this to, to be looked at in terms of requirements for space.
Yeah, we'd like to see him housed there, so we'll refer it to staff to check.
But you're expressing some support for the idea.
Yes. Yes, I'd like to see it done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've, we've had a look at the space and based on, based on the request, we can squeeze them in downstairs, but that's where we are right now. We can, we can find a location to house them as part of some of the other historical things that we have downstairs, so.
Great. Okay, so we're moving forward with that. And that appears to be it. And so on the floor is that we confirm all of those things that we received for information. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie. So we have given third reading to this bylaw, and this is final reading of the 2013-2017 financial plan. Councilor Doherty makes a motion for final reading of bylaw number 1948. Second, Councilor Smith, discussion. Councilor Krog?
Yeah, I love the work done and the effort the council and staff has put into it. On, I think it was second reading or third reading, I had some issues with just a couple of things that were in there, so I didn't support it at that time, so I would stand.
Nobody can hear you, Councilor Krog.
Okay, I'm going to speak against it or move against.
Okay. And Councilor Wershagen?
As am I.
Okay, this is a vote on final reading of the bylaw, 2013-2017 financial plan. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie. The next item is the.
I would, Mr. Mayor, I'll take my vote recorded.
I'm assuming now in these matters that we would record the opposing votes. The 1951, bylaw 1951, 2013 tax rates, and we recommended this to council this evening for first three readings. So bylaw number 1951, can I have first?
Which option?
Option three, yes. That was the one we agreed on this morning. Okay, so this is option three. Councilor Doherty makes the motion, Councilor Smith. This is first reading, all those in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, just a moment. Discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like I mentioned earlier today, these numbers are based off the financial plan, which I'm opposed to, therefore I will be opposed to these numbers as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of first reading? Councilor Krog voting in favor of it by not voting? That was in favor. And second, second reading?
Opposed.
That way, did call opposed.
Oh, you did.
Opposed.
Yes.
Councilor Wershagen and his vote recorded. And motion for second reading, Councilor Doherty. Councilor Kendall, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed. And we will record your vote. And third reading, Councilor Doherty. Councilor Wires, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed. We will record your vote. The next item of business is bylaw number 1955, the imposition of the flat tax on the Northwest 79th Avenue Road. This is the electric local area service bylaw, the one we talked about earlier on in terms of the three counselors being the party to, to review of who's in and who's out of that and the parcel tax. And so staff are recommending that we give the first three readings to bylaw 1955 to establish this flat tax in that particular area. So first reading, Councilor Doherty. Councilor Smith, discussion. Councilor, Councilor Wershagen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I just would ask for more information. I may be a little confused. I don't recall November of 2009 all that well. And I understand it's borrowing to do with the local service area, but what exactly is?
$70,000.
But what is, what are we looking to do with that $70,000?
Fix the roads and electrical, and I think there's water involved in it too. So they're buying this service, we're basically brokering it.
Part of the CFO's work, she was able to basically, this was an incomplete of project. The work has already been done. So these, these residents asked for the work, so they, as according to the local service area, they, they are expected to pay for it rather than the broader community because they've requested it as a local service area. So this is the final steps in completing this process. This is before our CFO was here and she's been able to, to deal with this as a housekeeping matter.
Okay. Clear. Okay, so the, the motion is first reading. All those in favor? All those in favor, opposed, carried, and second reading. Counselor Worschagin, Counselor Kendall, actually with Counselor Crogg.
I would start with the cable.
Well, I'm not sure what hand moved there. Second reading, all those in favor, opposed, carried. 1955, third reading, flat tax of Northwest Seventy-Ninth. Counselor Wires, Counselor Smith. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Excellent, moving right along. We're down to late items this evening. We have a number of late items, actually A to F, and let me begin with the first late item. So what I'm looking for here is that we have a motion and a seconder on this. Resolve that the council accepts the gift and proposal from the road organization with regard to supplying Wi-Fi hardware and connection that intends to supply the downtown core with complimentary Internet service, and further that the city will inherit the operational costs and potential installation costs for the Wi-Fi service hereafter. Counselor Smith, Counselor Worschagin, discussion. Awesome.
It's a great thing.
It's a great thing, all those in favor. Delegation presented by Patricia Denell regarding the Kootenai Energy Diet, result that council supports the Kootenai Energy Diet as proposed by Patricia Denell, afford us and further accepts the challenge from the city of Ca... Did we accept?
Yeah.
Challenge from the city of Casa Gorda by authorizing expenditure of up to twelve hundred and fifty dollars to provide a twenty-five dollar subsidy towards the initial sixty-dollar Kootenai Energy Diet energy assessment fee for the first fifty homeowners located within the city of Grand Forks who register for the program. Further, that funding will come from the electrical utility.
So moved.
And Counselor Wires.
Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering if I could offer this up to council to think about this, is if we get a big uptake from our community, does council want to take it beyond the first fifty people that are going to move towards their reduction? You know, it's an opportunity, if council wanted to promote that, that looks like a subsidy of twenty-five dollars of the sixty-dollar cost for the first fifty homeowners, but if we get a hundred homeowners that come forward, would we, would council want to consider subsidizing that to that point? I mean, I just, I don't want there to be a limitation, like we'll have to bring a report back to council when we get more people, if we get bigger uptake.
Okay, so do you want to add a word or two to this that says should the demand exceed what we budgeted, that we would reconsider our position and?
And we might kick Casa Gorda's challenge out of the air.
I think that's, I think, because this is really a good thing for reducing the carbon footprint of the whole community, so, you know, that small amount of money that would come from the electrical utility, even if it was, you know, a hundred people, there would be enough funding in the electrical utility this year to.
I was impressed with the local contractors involved and how much money it has brought into local, Counselor Crogg.
Oh, I would think rather than, say, if it exceeds the fifty, that then we would look at it, that we just change the number to a hundred. And then if there's more, then we'll look at it. It's a benefit to the city as a whole.
Okay, Counselor Wires.
I'd make that amendment.
Okay, Counselor Wires wants to bring it up to a hundred, which would increase the expenditure portion of it.
To twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred.
Because it'll encourage.
Counselor Crogg seconds that motion. Further discussion, Counselor Kendall.
I just, the wording is a little ambiguous. I'm guessing the funding for this is coming from the utility, the electrical utility.
Right, funding will come from the electrical utility.
I just wanted to make sure that's what I was gonna be doing here.
I hope we win, I hate losing competition.
First one signed up this afternoon.
Good. All right, ready for the question on this. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Mr. George Longan regarding the Boundary Community Trails Agreement, that the city of Grand Forks supports the Boundary Trails Agreement and further appoints Counselor Patrick Doherty as a representative liaison for the city with regard to the Boundary Community Trails Agreement. This is, in my mind, a phenomenal piece of work by this group that they've gotten this many people at the table to agree on anything, so I think our support is really worthwhile here. So making the motion is Counselor Smith, Counselor Crogg, seconds. Discussion. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Okay. The next item is a request for disposal of the design fabrication and installation of the welcome signs, that council chooses option number one, is that correct?
Whichever option council would like.
Well, I thought we had agreed on one. Oh, no, we didn't, did we?
We didn't.
It's still wide open to this meeting.
Exactly.
Okay, let's see what option council wishes to put in the blank. Counselor Worschagin.
As I earlier spoke against the option that you liked, I will put forward the option that I liked, and I will also state the one that I like as much, maybe not as much, but secondly, but for a secondary, and if so, continue. And shooting down one by one, I guess that's always.
Okay, and which one is it?
That's gonna be the glow tech, option A, daytime, no illumination.
Okay, would you hold it up, Mr. familiar, I got with it?
No.
Okay, I definitely support that.
That's the one we were two this morning.
That's the one, well, we actually didn't, we.
No.
And decided we would throw it open up because Counselor Crogg was not available.
Yeah.
That one? That one is, Counselor Worschagin makes the motion, do we have a seconder on that? I hate these quiet moments. I'm sorry, Counselor Worschagin, no seconders. Okay, do you want to try another design?
I would actually try.
Anything but the one I chose.
Absolutely. I don't want it to still look like a housing development project. I would like to move, and I believe Counselor Kendall actually liked it, to the Speed Pro option.
Okay.
That is about twenty thousand dollars cheaper than the one you like, excluding taxes.
I like that one.
So I'll move motion to reinstall that one.
I'll second that.
There we go.
Okay, discussion.
Discussion.
Counselor Crogg and then Counselor Smith.
Okay, maybe I missed something, but when we talk about option one, that was that we choose a sign and then proceed with it. So it wasn't option A or option B, so we're approving a sign, right?
Yes.
Okay, and when we look at them all, again, I don't know, I guess I'm in a miserably mood this evening, but originally, the budget that was set aside for signage, and then we'd even talked in the thirty thousand dollar range, which was what was left of the budget after the branding. And to me, I don't support that sign. It's rock, I guess it's rock, but it's sixty-four thousand dollars. And is that for the two signs or what?
That's for the two signs.
Yeah, so I look at the sign, if you go down from National Sign Corp, the eight-foot metal plating, and then we could look at, you know, having lights in it or something later, and to me, the price is closer to the original funding that we actually had.
Okay, so sticking to the motion on the floor, you don't support.
I do not support that.
Thank you. And further, Counselor Smith.
Yeah, the only thing about that rock one is that it may suit in one location, but it doesn't really suit at the other location, because this one on the east side of town, you could have it kind of coming out of the rock, whereas at the other location, it doesn't really suit that.
Right, okay. And further, Counselor Worschagin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was obviously speaking in favor of it, as I made the motion. However, this one does not get approved, I actually would support it after that, Counselor Crogg's National Sign Corp.
No deals at the table. Okay, we have a motion on the floor for this sign, I would like to speak against it. I'm just not sure what that whole thing is gonna look like. To me, it's too vague in terms of what the base would be and how it would stand out. Any further?
I'm completely lost.
Okay, so we're voting on this?
Somebody said National Corp, and that says Speed Pro.
I said National for the next sign if this one doesn't work.
They're already planning ahead.
Oh.
So on the floor is this sign, we have a first and a seconder, and all in favor. All in favor of this sign. Two. Against? Okay, now, rather than letting Michael make, or Counselor Worschagin make all of the recommendations, is anybody else wish to make a motion?
I will move the National Sign Corp, which is, not that, I like the one with the giant forks, that's, anyways, this one, and if we did want to, if people were set on rock or wood, then maybe that could be incorporated into what appears to be an aluminum base. But to me, we decided on a clean logo, so then the sign should be clean.
Okay, and a second for that motion, Counselor Worschagin. Discussion. Counselor Kendall.
I could support this sign, I think that it's definitely really close to the budget that we have, and we have some participation from some other community institutions, and I think that if there is something that we'd like incorporated into this design, that wouldn't be terribly expensive, we could probably have that discussion with the manufacturer, but overall, I like the look of it, and I guess.
Further to the sign, just a moment, Counselor Smith.
You know, it'd be nice, because it is relatively inexpensive, that, well, personally the other ones, that you wouldn't have to wait for the lighting element to be included into, probably be, you know, put in there without a big addition to the cost immediately, as opposed to waiting, especially if there are other partners out there that are interested in moving this forward.
Okay, Counselor Worschagin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just further to that, that's a pivotal point that I was making, I'm a hundred percent sure of what's presented to us, it could be illuminated, or that would be an extra feature we'd have to look at, but whether or not, how a person like to see it, not illuminate it right away, set up so it could be illuminated, so it's ready, someone would have to switch up parts and components, so I surely do support this.
Okay, further, ready for the question. All those in favor of this sign? Ah, hell.
Opposed.
Opposed. Counselor Wires, would you wish your vote to be recorded?
No, I just, I like the first one.
You did, okay.
I mean, the wood on it.
Just further to that, any cost we're looking at, we had recently talked to the community, and they were talking about potentially having twenty thousand dollars put towards the project as well. If that money doesn't come through, can we ask council if they would like to amend the financial plan to address the other issues they weren't addressing here, with the illumination, the illumination and the ability to, if they would like to see the base accentuated, with even a base of rock or anything to that effect, because it, just at this point right now, we're gonna have a concrete base that'll be subsurface, and this will be coming up off that, would council like to see anything else? And just to amend the financial, allow us to amend the financial plan at the end of the year and reallocate funds that we've already got in the capital budget this year, because we won't have to add anything to the budget, it'll just be reallocated.
Counselor Kendall.
The one thing that was included in all of the other signs, I believe, was one of the taglines for the branding, where it was, "Settle Out or Peaceful Living," or "Welcome Home," or something like that, maybe, maybe something that we would like to have.
What I think that we're being asked here is if we give our administrator some leeway here, he'll come back with some improvements to this that will give us those amenities.
Yes.
And so that should be a motion to give our C A O permission to go ahead with amending the budget for this matter and looking at the cost of it. Counselor Kendall, second, Counselor Worschagin, discussion. All those in favor.
Would you like this be brought back to council then with all these changes to it?
I guess the council would like to see what, how you're progressing with the plan on that, is that, am I speaking for council?
Yeah.
Question?
Yes.
On another item, on these late items that came forward through you to the C A O, I understood that we made a motion to receive the Granby Wilderness Society's proposal, and we referred it for further discussion this evening regarding the request for contributions of a thousand to two thousand dollars to participate in the.
Actually, she removed that request for.
Did she remove?
Yes.
Because of the, because of the in-kind contribution of the engineering students.
Yes.
Yeah, she was withdrawing the financial contributions because we were gonna be giving forty thousand dollars in in-kind contribution.
But our students are only gonna be for, till the end of August, and isn't this a long-term project that she's working on? I thought she was, I thought they were working on this for a while.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, with the idea behind it from the city was to give them a good head start on the technical expertise to move some of the pieces forward. The thousand to two thousand dollars nominal amount that they were looking for was just for the interest in it, and then Ms. Colesville basically removed that request at that point.
Right, and we valued our contribution by the students at forty thousand dollars, so I think she was quite pleased to take that one.
Yes, I remember.
So we didn't really make a motion at that point. Okay, next item of business is the staff request for a decision on the proposed lease of seventy-two-twelve Riverside Drive. Can I have that motion? Counselor Doherty, Counselor Smith, and discussion. Counselor Crogg, somebody, whatever you name.
I guess I'm on a money fit again. I love the work they've done, the project looks like it'll be successful, and I guess the only issue that I would have would have been the, or to move the water line with the estimated twenty thousand dollar price tag hooked to it, and then the request for a Grantonade, as we don't have those. The waving of D C Cs and, you know, removal of concrete slabs and stuff, it's fine, but the leasing, because it is the taxpayers that bought the property and they're paying for it, and I think that's, they're getting good value for their money, and if it's used to this board group for a dollar a year, I think that's awesome. I just have an issue with a couple of the other costs that go along with it, and that's just my point of view.
Further discussion. Counselor Kendall.
As I stated this morning, I recommend, or I appreciate all the work that the groups have done. What I would like to know is, if we're adopting a resolution to proceed with this lease, I, what I would like to see is the terms of the lease before I agree to the lease, and I'm wondering if the, am I reading this correctly, are we agreeing to whatever the lease conditions are now, since we haven't got it drawn up at this point? And part of the proposal that was given to council, our C A O this morning had made some suggestions that in the longer term, there would be the possibility of market rate lease, you know, lease rates at some point in the future. I didn't see any of that in the proposal that's coming for council at this point. So my concern is, number one, what are the exact conditions of the lease now, in the five years and in the future? Because I would like to evaluate the entire proposal before I can agree to anything tonight.
Counselor Smith.
I agree with that. You know, our C A O did talk about some of the adjustments that we can make, and it would be nice, because it says to proceed with this lease, basically, as it's written.
Mr. Rown.
Mr. Mayor, just to further to that, our lease would be reviewed by our legal team to ensure that it met all the interests of the city and to protect and ensure we weren't finding assistance in business, any of the recommendations that, you know, that would be an administrative nature. So I just recommend that, you know, if we go into the details of that, the council scrutinizing it, it'd make it very challenging, where we would have the professionals look after that. So I just caution us getting too far into the details of that, we would have to negotiate those leases with the, with people we'd be entering into a contract with, so, but it will be going through our solicitor.
Thank you. Counselor Worschagin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as I mentioned earlier this morning, I certainly support this.
Okay, further discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Do you wish your vote recorded? Counselor Kendall? Okay, thank you. And a staff request for a decision on the disposal of twenty-eight fifty Second Street, which is the Wildlife Hall. And Counselor O'Doherty and Counselor Smith, discussion on this?
Just a word of clarification, it was a lease of the Wildlife Hall.
Yes, what did I say?
Disposal.
Disposal. Well, we kind of did, but we're leasing. Yes, the lease proposal.
Yeah.
That is the motion by Counselor O'Doherty. Please. Mr. Brown?
Just one more thing that wasn't clarified this morning is, we will have to go through the rezoning of the property. The property is currently zoned as R four, which is a multi-family residential. In order for an institution like this to be there, we would have to go through the public process of rezoning. Some of our current facilities don't actually meet the zoning obligations, but moving forward in the correct manner, it will be proven for us to rezone it, so that you go through the rezoning process.
And I'm sure that you would like to know if council has any immediate objections to rezoning.
If by council providing support to, where we have the lease, then that will get the support to move ahead with the rezoning.
That's understood, council?
Yeah.
Okay, a motion on the floor? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. That is all the late items that we have, bringing us down to the questions from the public and media. Any questions from the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. First, a couple of comments. I think Counselor O'Doherty talked about the washrooms. I don't know how it occurred, but the washrooms at Barbara Ann Park were open the summer.
Okay, was it magic?
It was a test, Roy.
Pardon?
It was a test, if you're being...
I guess that's, there must have been a tweet goes back...
We're on the bid here.
I want to thank you for choosing that simple sign without a lot of wording and...
Cluttered.
A question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Wires. Mentioned looking further into the future. Who has a capacity to do that? Who is this person?
Boy, the technology that's out there today, boy, I'll tell you, it's far surpassing our abilities.
Technology may be there, but...
It's the younger generations that we need to bring up through the ranks to...
I don't know how it's, not from what I read, and I read a lot of that stuff. Finally, with regard to the facility that you talked about last, is the proposal to build a building in front of it, as I understand the plans would be to...
The campfire building would be brought over.
I think there's a drawing with the proposal.
You're planning to close...
Rosalyn donating that campfire building?
No, building across from my, on Riverside.
No, I know, but that's what they're bringing there.
I think we could arrange a meeting for you after we adjourn with the principals here that would explain the project to you. But yes, it does involve closing the street and adding another building.
Yes.
Any further questions from the floor? I have one last item that I put off the, we are in a situation where we have to go to Phase One water controls to ensure that we continually stay on top of our water supply, and Mr. Allen will explain in more detail what the water restrictions will be.
Sure, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. So until further notice, according to council's policy twelve oh two, we had a situation today where one of our pumps went down. We lost a pump that supplies the, supplies our main, supplies the system, and we're going to have that pump pulled on May the tenth, when the contractor's available to come in and pull the pump and do the repairs. Until that time, we're going to be in limited capacity, so it's going to be important that we adhere to the sprinkling regulations, Stage One is set by council, which is odd and even, which means that if your house address ends in a odd number, you can water on the odd day of the month, so basically every other day. If you end in an even number address, so address ending in two, then you can water on an even number day. And the hours are set, and they will be posted on our website. Manual sprinklers are between seven AM and nine AM, and seven PM and nine PM at night. That allows us to have controls over the filling of the reservoir to ensure we have capacity. And the other side benefit to that is, it reduces our carbon footprint on the community because we're reducing the electrical energy needed to pump the water out of the system, so, but in the short term, it's to deal with the pump issue that we have.
Counselor Wershagen and Counselor Wires?
I just, for clarification, I was under the understanding, number one, that's always an effect when we're sprinkling, and number two, is it between seven and nine, morning and night, one but not both, or can you do both? I always thought it was one but not both.
So, Mr. Mayor, the, I understand, but it's not in the policy that we are on, I haven't been able to locate the policy at this point, that we are on three hundred and sixty-five days a year under Stage One, which makes sense for a municipality to be on those situations for regulations. The, it says in here at the manual sprinklers, those premises with the odd number civic addresses may sprinkle in the mornings from seven AM until nine AM, and those premises with even numbered civic addresses may sprinkle in the evenings from seven PM to nine PM. So I guess it is the morning, and then like Counselor Wershagen pointed out, but we'll bring those, we'll post those restrictions on in City Hall and on the website, and we'll be putting out a news release.
Counselor Wires?
I was just curious which pump it was that was...
If you're even numbered, you can only water in the morning, but if you're odd, you can water in the evening.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense to me either. I thought it was one but not both.
Counselor Wires?
Yeah.
Yeah, I might have been upset right this morning.
Stop.
Sorry.
Can I know where the pump, which pump? Was it at one of the wells?
Three eights. It's three pump three eight.
Oh, three eight?
Yes.
Okay, it's not the one you're in charge of. Good. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, just a moment.
Then I can tell my...
Mister Jones, last.
We'll get that cleared out.
I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Historical Society. I'll be in touch with Mr. Allen. It's become a bit of a quick issue we need to resolve by the end of the month because they're moving. I need, also, in another tack, I'll just renew my suggestion. Slag. Put some slag in that sign. It's important to the community. And if you paint all the text in reflective white paint, just like the signs, where's the illumination important?
Yeah, well, we're going to get a report back on that, and I'm sure you'll be here when we discuss it.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So I'd just like to express my thanks for your decision tonight, and we are thrilled to move ahead on this, on this three-agency, multi-agency accommodation project. We trust we won't disappoint you, that we will be able to achieve a lot of the things that we have promised that we can achieve in this community, and we look forward to being your best tenants ever.
Great, thank you very much. Motion to adjourn? So moved, Counselor O'Doherty.